Next item is 10.7, that's a budget adoption, that's the first reading. Dr. Rubio?
Yes, we have Ms. Doris Sue here again. I'm sorry. Oh, Lisa, you need some help, I can come up.
Your presentation?
I think this is right.
And do you press on where it is?
Yeah, she tell, she always tell me to go.
Well, you can do that, right, but if you're.
Right.
Oh, yeah, but if you wanted them to see it as one big screen?
Mm-hmm.
See that little thing that's like a screen there, left click. Slideshow. And it's one big screen for that. Sitting.
And I just go along.
Yeah, there.
Okay.
See?
So, for the main.
Uh, there's two more.
Good evening again. Tonight, we're going to do the first reading on the district seventeen eighteen projected budget. And the goal is to balance the budget for next year. But before I look at the, I have you, I have you to look at the school budget. I want to mention a little bit about the May governor revised. So what the governor did is based on the new economic data, he updates the January budget with the May revised. And in the May revised, the Prop ninety-eight guarantee was up one point one billion dollars over the January estimates. And it's now is proposed to be at seventy-four point six billion. And the state wearin' you for seventeen eighteen is projected to be up by two point five seven seven billion. The governor is expecting to have a strong PIT growth, which is the personal income tax growth is about three billion dollars, which is offset a little bit by the weak sales tax wearin' you. And then the one-time funding that he was proposing in January disappear now. Is, it's kind of disappear for seventeen eighteen, but it's con, it's a contingent allocation with funds available only in May two thousand nineteen if the Prop ninety-eight guarantee stay at seventy-four point six billion or higher. So in other word, if the economy stays good, then we're going to see that one-time discretionary in May two thousand nineteen. So the legislature takes it from here and then has until June fifteen to send the budget bill to the governor. But as you know, on June thirteen, the legislature made an agreement. So the budget is going to take effect on July first. So now let's look at the budget for the seventeen eighteen and we're going to start with the income side. And on this slide, you can see the different sources of income funding for the school district for seventeen eighteen. LCFF, federal income, state income, local income. There's self transferring and for a projected total of eleven point three million dollars. Expenditures. And these are the expenditures listed in here for seventeen eighteen. Certified salaries, classified salaries, the fringe benefits, books and surprise, services, capital outlay and the indirect costs. And it's projected to be a total of twelve million dollars for seventeen eighteen total expenditures. And then the transfer out, the hundred and twenty-five thousand is the general fund contributions to the food services program. And the contributions is expected to be at one point six million dollars. The fund balance. So you can see on this slide, it shows the July first beginning projected fund balance and the projected ending balance for seventeen eighteen at, on June thirty of two thousand eighteen. It's going to be projected at two point six eight million dollars. And then on the, the bottom of the slide, it shows the components of the ending balance. So the four percent reserve is the four hundred eighty-six thousand. And then the ECL replacement reserve account is going to be two hundred and one thousand dollars. It's an annual of a hundred thousand a year. So since seventeen eighteen is the second year we are at the ECL facilities. So we are going to set aside two hundred one thousand for that capital reserve. So the last board approved budget is back in March two thousand seventeen, which is the second interim. So what are we going to do right now? We're going to look at the, the projected ending sixteen seventeen budget as compared to the last board that you saw in March. So now.
Sorry, may I ask a quick question? If you don't mind going back, apologize to the fund balance. I have a question around the four percent reserve. If I recall correctly, there was an open question as to whether we should be adding to this every, every single year? Or do we need to preserve a four percent reserve? Did we have clarification on, on that?
So your question is saying, what is this four percent reserve?
Should we increase it, is what you're saying?
My question is, do we have to add four percent every year? Or should we always maintain a four percent reserve?
What this four percent reserve is the state minimum requirement with the district that you able, that you are able to set aside on your book. So in other word, to show that you are fiscally sound, your district is fiscally sound, you should be able to set aside at least four percent of your total district expenditures for that year in your ending fund balance.
And to answer, go ahead, go ahead.
And this number will change each year because, again, the four percent is based on your total expenditures for that fiscal year. So if your expenditures are going up each year, that mean your four percent minimum, minimum reserve will be increased too. So does that answer your question?
I, I don't think so. So, but your question is, should that compound, should that increase over time? Should we add four percent every year? Most districts, the way things are right now in the state, are maintaining a static four percent that's discreet, discreet every year. They're not doing, some districts in the past have done a larger reserve. They, the boards have elected, let's, let's set aside six percent and maintain six percent every year. Let's set aside eight percent. It's a little unclear to me right now, and I'm not sure how Doris Sue feels differently, that we could do more or not. I, I'd be a little hesitant, but that might answer your question a little. Districts in the past have set aside more, because it's not a lot of money, but it's just a state minimum based on our size.
So to answer part of your question, it's not compounded. So it's not money that you set aside. This, last year, let's say you set aside four hundred thousand. This year, you have to set aside another four, four percent of this year four percent.
And that is a requirement?
No, that, that's not. It, it, it's not a compounded number. It just, it's a year based on your year expenditures. And there are districts nowadays setting more than the four percent minimum reserve. And that has to gone through a board resolution in order to increase that reserve. I have seen district that instead of their bigger district with only three percent minimum reserve, and they increased it to seven percent. And that has to be done through separate board resolution to get that reserve percentage increased.
And some of them are.
But on this day.
Yeah.
It's only requiring for us is the four percent.
And some of those large districts are, are reducing them now, I hear. They're, they're bringing them back down.
Well, and also there has been legislation introduced regarding reducing the minimum requirement. So that may help in certain sense and hurt in others. But there is, it's on the horizon, there is maybe a possible change.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so now we're back to this slide, which is showing the projected sixteen seventeen ending budget with the second interim numbers that you saw in March. And you see a decrease of forty-eight thousand dollars in the funding.
Ms. Doris Sue, could you go back to that slide, just for the sake of explanation? The, the local income is, comes from local sales tax, or what is that source of income?
There will be a separate slide to tell you more detail. But you're right. So LCFF, we're going to see a slight decrease of one thousand seven hundred dollars. And then the federal income, we're going to see a decrease of two thousand dollars. And then the state income, we're going to see a decrease of a hundred and one thousand dollars. But I would like to point your attention to the stirs on behalf, decrease of a hundred and six thousand. That was only on the book. It has no fiscal impact on the actual district operation. Remember, back in fiscal year fourteen fifteen, there was a new pension reporting requirement for all school district that the schools nowadays has to report a percentage of the state contribution on the pension cost. And how they, how they're going to do it is you increase the income side of the state portion. And then at the same time, you offset that by your expenses side. So even though you're seeing on this slide a hundred and six thousand dollars decrease on the stirs behalf, there is no fiscal impact on the district book because you will see a decrease, a hundred and six thousand on the income side. But at the same time, when we're going to see the expenses later on, you will see a decrease on the expenses. That offset each other to zero. And then the local funding, for the unrestricted local funding, the twenty seven, the twenty-seven thousand dollars increase is pretty well make up from the parcel tax increase of twenty-four thousand dollars and also miscellaneous income, three thousand dollars. And then the restricted local funding, the increase of twenty-nine thousand dollars, we are projecting to see an increase of about thirty thousand on the third-party facilities rental income. And then because of the increase on the O and M, the maintenance budget, I'm projecting to see the city will put in another twenty-one thousand on that maintenance budget. And, but at the same time, there will be a reduction of special ed allocations of about twenty-two thousand. So that makes up the difference. You still, you're still going to see twenty-nine thousand dollars on the restricted local income. So expenditures, after the update, expenditures are reduced by a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. And here is the detail of the general fund expenditures. So the certificate salary, we're going to see an increase of about twenty-nine thousand dollars. Mainly is because of the, there is a position at the high school, which we budget at point five FTE, and now apparently starting in, started in February two thousand seventeen, when we replaced that teacher that resigned, the new person was hired as a one point oh FTE. So that's why there is a, there is a need to increase the budget on these certificate salaries. And then the classified salaries, it's only a slight increase, three thousand dollars. Employee benefits, remember that decrease of a hundred and six thousand on the stirs on behalf on the income side? And that's why now you're seeing a decrease of eighty-five thousand. Part of it, because we are seeing a big decrease on the benefits, is because the stirs on behalf, the offsetting side on the expenditures are causing this big decrease. So books and surprise, decrease of thirty-two thousand dollars. So mostly the decrease on the materials from the, from the O and M budget for about nine thousand dollars. And then for the special ed preschool program, we are moving the budget from the materials to the NPA or MPS contracts. So we are moving the money from the materials to the services. And then for the EPA, the education protected account, we are moving the budget from the materials actually to the salary account. So that's why you see a decrease of thirty-two thousand in the materials. And then contract, we're going to expect it to see a decrease of eighty-two thousand dollars on the contract. And mostly because of the PEG contract, which is the equity contract, that we are going to, we are not going to use up the whole grant. We are moving forty-two thousand of that grant to carry forward to next year. So that's why on the estimated actuals for sixteen seventeen, I'm going to reduce the budget for the contracts because we are not using the whole seventy-seven thousand dollars. And then another reason for the decrease of the contract is the S and C, the supplemental and concentration funding, we are moving part of the services budget to actually funding the salaries. And that's the main reason for the reduction of the contracts for sixteen seventeen. Any questions on this page? So now we look at all the projected sixteen seventeen school budget. And the next page, we are now going to compare the sixteen seventeen estimated actuals to the seventeen eighteen budget right now. So now we're going to look at the, the income side. It's the same thing on this slide. It's giving you an idea how we are comparing the sixteen seventeen projected number, projected ending number with the seventeen eighteen budget. And for next year, we're going to see, we're going to see a reduction of three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars on the income for next year. And here are the details. And the LCFF funding, we're going to see actually a slight increase of only a one thousand dollars on the LCFF funding. The federal income, we're going to see a reduction of fifty-five thousand dollars. And most of the reduction, as you can see, is actually is from the Title I, which is a reduction of thirty-six thousand dollars. And then the MA, which is a reduction of forty thousand. As you can see, we already talked about the MA money. The county recommended that we budget the MA money when we actually receive the money. So in sixteen seventeen, we receive forty thousand dollars MA money. But when I do the budget for seventeen eighteen, I'm not going to put in the budget until we receive the money. When we receive the money, then we're going to put in the budget during the interim. For the Title I, last year, we received ninety-one thousand dollars from the federal government on the Title I funding. This year, we're, I mean, next year, we're going to budget for only eighty thousand. The reason for the reduction of the Title I money is because of the new Every Student Succeeds Act that President Obama signed in December two thousand fifteen. I believe that, that regulation is requiring the district to set aside at least twelve percent to twenty-two percent more set aside on the Title I. So that's the reason why, in general, we are going to, most of the school districts, they will see a twelve percent to twenty-two percent reduction on Title I funding. And on this seventeen eighteen budget, I assumed at a reduction rate of twelve percent. And then the state income, a reduction of a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars from the one-time discretionary. Because again, I kind of touched on it earlier. The May revised eliminate the one-time funding that Governor Brown proposed in the January budget. And it's going to be based on whether the Prop ninety-eight guarantee is still going to stay at the seventy-four point five billion dollars or not. If the economy stays good, then we will get the money in May of two thousand nineteen. So that mean the school services and also the county office recommend the district do not put in a budget for the one-time discretionary for seventeen eighteen. So another big decrease is the two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars under the other state income. In sixteen seventeen, we receive a funding from the Clean Energy Act, a hundred and seventy-three thousand. This is a one-time funding. So we are not going to see that in seventeen eighteen. And then another grant that we received in sixteen seventeen is the college readiness grant for seventy-five thousand dollars. Again, this is a one-time grant that we're going to, that we received in sixteen seventeen, but we are not going to see that again in seventeen eighteen. And then, but in seventeen eighteen, we are going to see a grant, the career pathways for about forty-five thousand dollars, which we don't see this year. So this is the only addition that we see on the state funding. For next year, we're going to get an increase forty-five thousand under the career pathways. But the lead effect on the other state income is still going to be a deduction of two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Dor, if I may ask?
Yes.
Where's that forty-five thousand dollar grant shown here? Is it here?
It's under other state income. So if you go reduction of clean energy, a hundred and seventy-three thousand, reduction of college readiness, seventy-five thousand. You add on the forty-five thousand that we are going to get on the career pathway, the difference will be still a reduction of two hundred and fifteen thousand. So the forty-five thousand is part of the reduction of two hundred and fifteen thousand.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. Okay, other local income, the unrestricted local income, we're going to see an increase of sixty-five thousand dollars, mostly to do with the leases we sign up. We're going to see an increase of two hundred and twenty-six thousand on the leases. But at the same time, in sixteen seventeen, we receive a one-time PG and E energy incentives award of a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So if you take out the difference, it will come to still an increase of sixty-five thousand dollars. Okay, restricted local funding. We're going to see an increase of sixteen thousand dollars for seventeen eighteen. And this mostly is because of an increase in funding on the special ed allocations, nine thousand dollars. And then couple of the local grant, which is the behavior health, come to four thousand dollars. And then the city is projected to put in two thousand dollars more on the O and M budget. That makes the increase of sixteen thousand dollars for next year. Expenditures, after update, expenditures are increased by six hundred and forty-four thousand. And these are the details for the increase of expenditures. Certified salary, you can see that makes up a majority of the increase, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As you know, you just, we just went through the AP twelve hundred with the three percent increase. That's part of the reason for that big increase on these certificate salaries. And also besides the three percent increase, they have the step in column, two percent increase. And also some of the position that we hire in the middle of the year in sixteen seventeen, and now in seventeen eighteen, I have to budget for the entire year. And other reason for the five hundred and fifty thousand dollars increase is two positions that we are going to add for special ed. For this year, we contracted out to MP, NPA, non-public agency to do that. But in seventeen eighteen, we are going to hire two staff and created the two positions to do that functions instead of contracting it out. And another reason is the creation of that co-principal position that add on to the increase on the salary. And then the last but not least is the school days. We, we are now at a hundred and eighty-four days, but in seventeen eighteen, we're going to increase that to a hundred and eighty-seven days. Then obviously that add on to the cost too. And then the classified salary is a slight increase of eighteen thousand dollars. Most of the reason is because of the outreach position that we hired this year. The person came in late, but for next year, I have to budget for the whole entire year. And then the employee benefits, an increase of four, four hundred and six thousand. Books and surprise, decrease of a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. Most of the materials and surprise budget that we are going to see a reduction in seventeen eighteen is mostly come from the categorical program, which is like the Title I because we are no longer having the carryover balance that we had, like what we had this year, sixteen seventeen. So I'm going to see a reduction on the Title I materials budget, thirty thousand. And then the state lottery, I'm going to see another reduction of thirty-nine thousand dollars on the materials and surprise budget under the state lottery. It's the same thing. In sixteen seventeen, we have a carryover from fifteen sixteen to this year. But now we are projected to use up the whole categorical grant. So that's why in seventeen eighteen, we are no longer having these carryover money that we can able to budget for. So capital outlay or contracts, we are seeing a reduction of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on the contract. And the main reason for we are able to see a savings on the contract is because of the special ed, we added the two position. We are no longer going to contract out. We are no longer going to contract out in seventeen eighteen to the non-public agency. So we are seeing a reduction of at least a hundred thousand on the special ad and PA budget in seventeen eighteen. And then another reason for the savings in the contracts is the utilities budget that we've been paying for Sixty-First Street and also Forty-First, because we, we lease them out, so I don't have to put in any more utilities budget over at that two sites. So that is the reason for the increase of the a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Capital only, a decrease of thirty thousand. We bought a new van in sixteen seventeen, but we're not going to do that in seventeen eighteen. So that's for the decrease of the thirty thousand.
Dora?
Yes.
When you mentioned that the savings on contracts and services, that a hundred, of that a hundred and sixty had to do with us not contracting a position, sorry, not, no longer using a consultant, but rather hiring that position net, what was the, what was, what was the move for us? Meaning, we hired that person, so how much are we paying them compared to what we would have paid them as consultants?
I don't have the net savings, but I can email you after the board meeting.
But there are savings.
You're right, you're right. So you're going to see a reduction on the contracts, but at the same time, the two positions are really showing up in the certificated salaries.
And we were doing that because it took us a long time to find some special education staff, I think. Because I, I think Dr. Steele was contracting out, if I recall.
But one thing-
Is that correct?
Yes, that's right. But one thing I'm sure is always, I, I don't want to say the word cheaper, but it's, it's always more costly to go contract out to a non-public agency than actually getting somebody on staff.
Thank you, absolutely. I, I don't mean to put a price necessarily on humans or anything that way, but it's always good to have the context as to, you know, the financial impact for that move. Thank you.
But if the board is interested to know the savings, the, the left savings, I could figure that out and email it to the board.
Only if it's handy. If it's, if it's too much trouble, please don't, don't worry about it.
And then this slide is showing you the two, two big programs that requiring the general fund contribution in seventeen eighteen, which is the special ad and also the maintenance For special ad this year is eight hundred and nineteen thousand. Next year is going to be increased to eight hundred and seventy-two thousand. And then for the maintenance, this year are projected to be seven hundred and sixty-one thousand versus next year, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So multi-year, it's this slide showing the seventeen eighteen, eighteen nineteen, and the nineteen twenty projected budget. As you can see, the expenses for all three years are higher than the funding. That is the reason why for the reduction on the fund balance. The four percent minimum reserve is the four hundred and eighty-six thousand in seventeen eighteen, pretty stay the same for eighteen nineteen, is the same four hundred and eighty-six thousand, slightly going up to five hundred and one thousand in nineteen twenty. If you comparing the expenses for seventeen eighteen to eighteen nineteen, they are pretty well stay at the same level. And part of the reason is really to do with seventeen eighteen, we are going to have a one-time increase on the contract days, a hundred and eighty-seven days. But back in eighteen nineteen, I am assuming we are going back to the one hundred and eighty-four school days that we are having in the calendar. But this is only a summary of the multi-year projection. The one that you have on the legal paper that will tell you more detail on the multi-year projection. And we will be going over the multi-year assumptions after we are done with the PowerPoint.
Ms. Doris Sue, on this slide you have up front, and this is kind of an ongoing, I mean, I say it's a rolling average, based on you go back to when I came on the board in two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. Seems these numbers seem to be, they, they, not work themselves out, but they kind of, the, the impact or the deficit spending is basically, is reduced over the years. Is there any type of, kind of gets you a, an overall moving average? Because this, these are, it seems to be static numbers, a shot, a snapshot in time. Is there any way that we can compare how we were doing prior and then see how these numbers kind of work, not work themselves up, they just kind of adjust downward over the next number of years? Because I think that's happened over the last three, four years now. Is that your take as well? Or are we still at the same level of deficit spending over the last four years?
Well, basically, the, the way that it works is, is a simple formula, which is you go by how much that you received minus how, how much that you spent.
Well, I'm just trying to get to a trend that's established, because I'm looking at these numbers and I have context of how we're doing prior years to where we have today. So if we're working in, because some of the, some of the way we're setting up our finances seem to be the same over year, year over year. And the numbers do vary, but it's not this wildly gyrating of numbers. I'm trying to get a feel for trends regarding expenditures versus revenues and see where we actually land. Because I'm, I'm trying to get an idea of, of just the, the environment or the, that we're, that we're in.
Well, I can tell you right now is, is a very difficult environment for the school funding, because as Dr. Rubio mentioned earlier, the, on the May revise, pretty well, we are not seeing new money coming in. And even the forty-eight dollars per student or per ADA money that the Governor Brown committed in January is being eliminated this time, right? And then he said, I'm still going to give you money, but then I'm going to give you way more. I think on his May revise, he proposing paying way more for each ADA on the May revise for the one-time discretionary. But he said, this money, I'm not going to give it to you until two thousand nineteen. And also, not unless the economy is still staying in the good shape that we are having right now. But think about, the LCAP is going to be fully implemented in two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one. Then at that time, we are going to be under a colder funding environment. And at the same time, there are costs that is out of the district control, like the stirs and purse. And that color alone is not even able to cover the increase on the purse. So I can tell you as a fiscal person, unless we have more funding from the state or from the federal government, it will be much more difficult for us to balance the budget.
Are, are we still chasing that, the funding gap for, for, I know it's unfunded, unfunded liability because of the inadequacies of investment and inadequacies of, of contributions. Are we ever going to reach fulfilling the, the responsibility as far as paying for retirement?
We will be. The, the, we, while, when we talk about this third, I mean, the multi-year assumptions later on, we're going to have more detail on the stirs and purse. The answer, yes, we are going to expect to see rising costs on the pension costs. But at the same time, we, when we are fully implemented on the LCFF, we are going to be under only colder funding environment. And unless we have more students coming, then it will help us on the book. But we're going to, I, I believe a lot of districts right now, they are still having a structural deficit spending situations. But I, but the, on the bright side of this multi-year projection, again, I'm very conservative on my NYPD. This NYPD was done based on we are having our current enrollment. See, if we are, if, like what Dr. Rubio was telling us, if we're going to see an improvement on the enrollment for next year, these numbers will be better. I'm, I'm budgeting the NYPD based on the current ADA data.
And then one final question. And I know this idea has been kicked around, but having to do with our responsibility as far as being a participant in the joint venture with the city. The, I'd still like to investigate the idea of having to outlays, oh, is it two hundred thousand dollars for replacement cost funding for this building or this campus? And we have to outlay that every year for the next forty years? Is that my, is that, is that correct?
On the JOA, the, the page where it spell out the capital reserve account, yes, for the first four year, we are supposed to set aside a hundred, a hundred thousand, one hundred thousand dollars each year for the first four years. And these numbers will go up.
Yeah, and it's, if we can, see if we can use our bonding capacity for that ability to finance rather than actual general fund. Because that would loosen up or allow funds to be used for other operations rather than socking it away for something that may or may not occur. But if we have the capacity or the ability to, to, the bonding capacity to replace or repair on a larger scale than, than typical maintenance, then that's an option that we may, we should investigate.
So, and I just want to make sure I'm clarifying for Doris Sue, you're, because you're not talking about using the actual bond money because the IRS expects us to pay that, use that in three years.
The ability to.
You're saying that the fact that we have additional bonding capacity in the future over the years, and that's kind of a interesting accounting question, Dora. I don't know whether the county would have a, or you have an opinion on that. So the idea that we, we know we're, we're going to have additional bonding capacity in future years, can we book that amount even though we, we know the total is, let's say, I think maybe it's twenty-three more million dollars? I don't know if we can book that and count that towards that or not. And maybe that's something we need to explore with the attorney.
I one time actually talked to Mr. Greeney about that.
But not using bond money, using bonding capacity, the future money we're going to get.
All right.
So we may need to ask the attorneys, I'm not sure.
But Don, one thing that I want to point to your attention, if you go in and read the JOA, it does have an option for us to change this capital reserve formula, just to let you know.
Oh, great. I mean, that, that gives us flexibility in order to maybe free up additional funds.
Possibly, yes.
Or even give us the possibility of lower the a hundred thousand that was required for the first four years. I think it mentioned in the fifth year or after the five years that we move into the ECL. I believe there was, there is an option in that JOA for the leadership to change that formula on the capital reserve.
And it may be something I want to bring up with the city manager. I think based on the little bit I know regarding the city's budget right now, they might have some interest in reducing the amount that they're committed to right now, I suspect. I don't know.
Are they able to go out for bonding capacity?
No, 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 they're not, not to my knowledge, but just the fact that they're also, they have to commit a certain number every year as well. I'm just wondering if it's something that they may want to discuss.
Well, I can tell you, they already contacted me regarding the O and M budget that I'm going to present to the board, so. Okay, so.
Dora?
Yes.
If, if I may ask, but you mentioned that Governor Brown alluded to some allowance money that could potentially hit us positively on the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And then I completely agree with your assessment about not, not including it in, in this projection. But if we were, do we know what amount we would be receiving? If that were to materialize as, as, as we know it now?
Actually, I believe it's going to be for Emory is at least going to be a hundred and forty thousand. And when we go, when we are going to go over the NYPD assumptions, I believe I, I written down more information on that part. So I let you know the exact number, the exact dollars per ADA for that one-time discretionary. But going back to this multi-year projection, the seventeen eighteen NYPD now is showing deficit spending for all three years. But on the NYPD, it's still showing the district is able to maintain the four percent minimum required reserve. And the staff is recommending the positive certification of the seventeen eighteen adopted budget at the next board meeting. So before I go to the questions, I want to now look at the NYPD assumptions. And Lisa, I need your help to post it on.
Maybe hit escape, the escape button might get you out of there.
The assumptions, the NYPD assumptions, Don, which is.
As, as the file opens up, I wanted to share my takeaway from what Dora, share my takeaway for, to the board with, for what Dora just presented, is that we, we appear to be in a very good financial state, and we're, have very healthy reserves. Of course, that the reserves appear to be shrinking, and we should just be cautious of that and just keep an eye on that as we continue to plan for the upcoming years.
I think that's correct.
So now let's look at the NYPD assumptions. So line three showing you the annual color for each of the budget school year is one point five six percent in seventeen eighteen, two point one five next year, and then two point three five for nineteen twenty. So the gap close percent is forty-three percent seventeen eighteen, seventy-one percent next year, no, I mean seventeen, forty-three percent for seventeen eighteen, seventy-one percent for eighteen nineteen, and seventy-three percent for nineteen twenty. But then the one that I really want to point your attention to is a little bit below where is that stirs and purse. So you can see the stirs is going to increase from fourteen percent all the way to eighteen percent in school year nineteen twenty. And then the purse is going to be from fifteen percent all the way to twenty percent in nineteen twenty. And actually, the purse is going to be projected to exceed twenty-seven percent by year twenty-four, twenty-five. So if you go into so many years in the future, when we are fully implemented, the LCFF, we are only getting the color, which is one or two percent. But at the same time, these are the district costs that is out of the control of the district, but the color- But the COLAR itself is not covering these, the increase of the pension costs alone. So, and then on the bottom of this page, I listed the certificated FTE and the classified FTE and the management FTE for the three different school years. So any questions before we go to the next page of the assumptions? No? Okay. The next page is the funding. So it listed the fundings that we are projected to receive in the three different school years. I want to point your attention to the one-time discretionary funding. You will see all three years are showing zero because we are not going to put in a budget until maybe we are actually receiving the money in May 2019. So back to the question the board has earlier on the ADA dollars for the one-time discretionary money. During, in the January budget, the governor budget projected $48 per student on the January state budget. But right now with the May revised, he's giving you way more money, which is $173 per student instead of the 48 that he proposed in January. But this is a contingent with the economic condition, and we're not going to see it until 2019. So any questions on this second page of the multi-year projection? Okay, all right. And then the next thing I want to go over is the O and M budget.
When you talked about the one-time money per student, what school year, you said we won't get it till 1920, uh, it's the 19?
May 19, 2019. So it will be school year 1819.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so let's look at the ECL operations and maintenance budget. So on this worksheet, you will see the actual closing for last year, which is fiscal year 1516, and the projected closing numbers for 1617, and also the new budget for 1718. Pretty well, the 1718 budget is built on the 1617 estimated actuals. So any questions on this O and M budget?
Yes, I do, I have a question. It seems like that our, basically our budgetary numbers are being positive, that we were projecting or putting money for our budget, and our expenses are less than, than what it actually is. Is that pretty much a general statement I can use as far as explaining the positive aspect of our budget?
You mean the district budget or the O and M?
Uh, O and M.
When you said positive, what exactly you mean by positive?
Right now, we had a budgeted of 1.277, or 1.227 million, and then we're at 1.218. So we budgeted for higher expenses or higher, and we're coming in lower. Is that a general assumption I can make based on the spreadsheet you've given us?
Well, I can't explain the reason you're seeing in 1617 is 1.218 versus the numbers in 1718 is 1.227. The reason for the slight increase on that O and M budget is mainly because of, let's say, the utilities. You are, we are making the assumption that it will increase by.
I'm sorry, I read it wrong because I think I was, I'm trying to compare what you projected and for our budget for the 2016 year, I'm sorry.
That's fine. And because I hesitated to say positive, because this is a program that the general fund has to always put in contributions. So because this program is able to balance, it's all because general fund is making support in this program. And you can see actually, the general fund contribution is going to increase from 761,000 in 1617, going to jump to 7,676,800 in 1718. So the general fund is projected to make a higher contribution to the maintenance program. Unless, again, I'm budgeted, I put the budget, I did the budget very conservatively because I'm assuming we are having the same third-party rental, $130,000 stays the same for 1718. If we're going to get more money out of the third-party rental, and that will reduce our general fund contribution to this program.
Okay, now, this goes back to what I was trying to do before. Then the estimated actuals for the 2015, 16, how did we come out, or I should say, I'm trying to get it, how you budgeted the last time to get to where we are? How are we looking as far as to be appropriate enough money in the budget to cover our expenses? Or are we underestimating the expenses for our budget purposes?
So you're asking how do I come up with the 1617 estimated actuals?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. What I did is way before I'm done with the estimated actuals, I will send out, actually, I sent out three different emails to the program managers. All these POs that they having open in the system, I kind of need to know, do they need more money? Or do they not, you know, do they not needing so much encumbered? So that I can actually know exactly how much money that they need for the rest of the year up till June 30th, 2017. That way, I know exactly how much going to be encumbered on the non-salary account. And for the salaries, you know exactly how much the staff are going to get paid for annual compensation. So that part is quite easy, is the non-salary part, the materials and surprise, the contracts, which I need to communicate with the program managers to get their input to see, oh, this PO that I set up for $100,000, I'm not going to use the whole $100,000, you can release the money back. So that's how I come up with the estimated actuals. Actually, the way that I do the estimated actuals, not just for the maintenance budget, I did the entire school budget is the same.
Dora, I'm sorry, let me just interrupt. President Manon was also asking, I think, how did we do your estimated actuals? Were they close to what we thought before? How far off were we with this particular budget, do you recall, if I understood?
You're correct. And because, I think, because we didn't have a full year under our belt to understand what our expenses were going to be, and I think we were wildly off on certain numbers of those things that we didn't have any data, you know, history on. Salaries are pretty much programming salaries, like you just mentioned, as far as are quantifiable. But when you get into the operations of this facility, for the operations, that's what's kind of the wild card. Is, were your assumptions close? How, you know, how, where are we in that judgment?
For 1516, we were close because we are only in the facilities for two months. But for 1617, I don't have the exact budget number with me tonight. Because when we did the budget in the beginning of the year for 1617, we put in a adopted budget for this maintenance program. And then we revised it up during the first interim and also the second interim. I guess it's nice to show the board was now from the second interim to the estimated actuals. I believe that is what you're looking for.
That's correct.
Maybe it's something that in the second reading, which is the next board meeting, I could do a spreadsheet showing you the original budget, and then the first interim budget, the second interim budget, and now the estimated actuals.
Yeah, and I think that'll help you in your, basically establish trends, and then that'll help you budget for the next year and then the following year. Because then you can get more and more data, and you get costs that you're knowing that you're going to occur. So it'll help the process and basically hone in and nail the budget.
Actually, for, because 1617 is the first year that we are at this facility for the whole school year. That's why we are seeing the increase on the budget from the beginning budget to first, and then another increase from the first to the second, and probably another increase from the second to estimated actuals. But I do not expect to have the same pattern for 1718. Because now we are at this location for the entire fiscal year. We have a much better understanding how much it costs us for the utilities, how much it costs us to repairs or stuff like that. So by the time when I do the budget for 1718, I should be only assuming the normal increase, like the insurance 5% increase, the utilities, another 5% increase from this year cost. You see what I'm saying? So I should not be seeing a big jump of the budget on the expenses on this program in 1718, I hope.
And just a side note, I think there's a possibility of future income or revenue from our solar, our power purchase agreement if we go forward with that. And that'll be something to investigate at a future time.
Oh, okay, all right.
Dora, hopefully two brief questions. Can you help me reconcileate where the, our general contribution, for example, for 2016, 2017, our contribution from the general fund, the $761,000, how does, how does that connect to the multi-year projections? Are they just completely independent, or do we actually see these contained within?
If you use this number, 1617 to 761,000, add on, I believe there was a slide that I showed you earlier on the special add contributions. Actually, this number that you see should be exactly matching the slide that we saw earlier on the maintenance O and M general fund contribution. No, that's not.
Under contributions, ongoing maintenance?
Yes, they should be exactly matching to the same penny, 761,000 for O and M.
Okay, thank you very much. And then the second question, and what are these, are these salaries for employees of the rec center?
The classified salaries are basically our free custodians. They are, none of these budget are for city staff. These are all Emory Unified employees. For, so for the classified salaries, the custodians, FTE that we have. And then the overtime budget, which is $10,000 for next year, and then the sub is $20,000 for next year. The reason I'm assuming we should be seeing a savings in the sub is because I put in a budget for the part-time custodian position under the classified salary. So I should be seeing less demand on the custodian sub. And then the supervisor and administration salary, which is the maintenance director, and 30% of my salary goes into this O and M budget because on the JOA, it specified that the CBO, which tracked the book of the ECL budget, is able to charge part of my salary into this program. And then other, other classified salaries, it's the security staff that we have is under this classified salary, $25,000.
Dora, I'm hesitant to ask you any questions because it's pretty late, but I just, a real quick one, because I think you've been very thorough. Overall, from the beginning of the year, and I know you can tell us more next time, but was there anything in the O and M budget that was very, very far off? This goes back to an earlier question. Was electricity, or water, or gas, anything very, very far off from what we thought it was going to be before we moved in? Can you share that with the board?
The utilities are way far off from what I put in, in the beginning budget.
So it's a lot higher utility expenses than we thought it would be to run the whole facility. That might be because of the pool and heating it, that might be because of the lights outside, I guess, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're correct. So I guess I'm talking too much, so I better.
We're asking too many questions, that's what it is, Dora, appreciate it.
Very thorough, Dora, thank you.
As far as that's concerned, then if there's a public comment, I see none, then is there any final discussion amongst the board regarding this item? And I know it's just a first reading. All right, seeing none, then we will move on to the next item. Thank you, Ms. Dora Sue. And that is item 10.8, and that's board policy, the equity, and it's the first reading of that.
Yes, and just so the board knows, that might help you save a little time. This is pretty much the same except for a few changes you asked to make regarding parent engagements. And I think one or two statements in the beginning we took from another plan from another city. So this has not changed really, except for your input that you gave before. I'm happy that we have it before you. And I think, hopefully, if our next meeting isn't quite as long, it'll be a little bit easier for you to give more thought and reflection to. But if you see anything that jumps up, or jumps out at you that doesn't look right, please let me know. But this is just for a first reading, and actually, it's the second time you've seen it, I believe.
So are we discussing this now, or is it just in advance?
It's open for discussion if you choose, or you could discuss it next time as well. It's just, it's really meant to be a first reading, and we slowed it down a little bit. We put it out to the teachers to give input, we wanted to give them some time. We got just one or two responses, and we might send it out to them again if we can, through a personal email. But we wanted to give it a little bit of time, and so it's open to discussion now if you like, or we'll come back to you on next time.
Yeah, and you're correct, Dr. Rubio. I think we should probably just, if there's questions we want to ask you regarding that, and then also probably come in and coming back to our final discussion items. I think it's interesting that there are only one or two responses from teachers based on kind of the thrust that we had tonight regarding that. And I just wish there was a congruencies between actions that are seen and then not executed. And it's, I want to see more, more involvement on everybody's behalf.
Well, I will say this, it might be it's the end of the school year, and the teachers have a lot going on, and it's been a pretty heavy last couple of weeks. I agree with what you're saying, I just, I'm thinking about, since they're wrapping up tomorrow, then I'm thinking about shooting into their personal email, which I don't usually do till summertime. That's pretty important, and it'll give them another opportunity to take a look at it.
Other questions for Dr. Rubio?
My questions were more in regards to the execution of this. Right now, I think this looks really positive, there's a lot of positive things in it. I think we all did look at this before, and it seems pretty concise. But the execution of this is quite different than the I, the policy.
Absolutely.
And how this kind of thing is reported. and how this kind of thing is reported.
Yes.
At the end, it talks about being held accountable, and it talks about reporting out. Excuse me. One of the things is numbers, getting numbers of suspensions, looking at the diversity of those suspensions.
Exactly.
And then also, besides expulsion, we also have a tendency to revoke someone's inter-district transfer.
That's an interesting one. I will tell you, yes, go ahead, go ahead.
So I think that needs to be included in the evaluation of how student learning time and how discipline is handled, and looking at the racial aspect of that by the numbers. So I think when you report, I definitely think that when you talk about measurables, that means you need to generate a report that talks about how many children were suspended, how many children's transfers were revoked.
In fact, maybe we should add that here as an example. For example, down here in the last sentence, we should put, maybe we should put, for example, suspensions by ethnicity, ID, inter-district transfer revocations. We can put that in writing. I think you're bringing up a very good point. I was just going to add that the, there was quite a bit of, you know, there's probably mixed feelings about this, but there was quite a bit of pressure from teachers and some parents that regarding the revocation of IDTs. There have been many teachers, some of who were here tonight, and parents who have said if children aren't meeting what they've agreed to, and they're not from the city, there are many teachers here and parents, for good or bad. I don't know, I'm not saying it's the right thing. I just wanted to share with you that, or remind you that they feel like those transfers should be revoked. And I'm not wanting to start debate about tonight, but I just wanted to share that with you. But I would agree with you, we should have that in there.
There's, if you look at goal number three, that's the losing instructional time. It's talking about, I believe, suspensions, expulsions, that may be an appropriate spot.
Oh, right there, okay.
I had three other things, and again, we don't have to discuss these in depth tonight, but I just want to bring them to people's attention now. And that is, I just wanted clarification. Item four, advanced academic opportunities. I assume maybe that means AP classes, but I'm not entirely sure. So perhaps we could include just a couple of examples in that item.
Oh, I think that's a good question. I think you're right, but we should be clearer. Okay.
Item six, I just find it reads fairly awkwardly. Part of it is create opportunities, and then you kind of comma with opportunities being for those. I would just like to see that cleaned up a little bit. I have a hard time figuring out what that item is trying to say.
Got it, okay.
And then my last point is item 11. And I guess I'm not quite sure what this means. When I first read it, I thought maybe it was talking about, you know, hiring teachers of color. But if you go down to item 13, that seems to be the gist of item 13. So I wasn't exactly sure and couldn't remember what item 11 really, what the point of that was or what that meant.
Okay. Great.
One other thing, Dr. Rubio. I'm just looking at this, and I know this is, it's kind of the heart of the matter regarding the equity issue that we're trying to get our hands around. I want to stress that this is, it's going to change a lot of people's ideas of what this district is about. And I think it's very important that we stress that because there's going to be pushback, there's going to be unacceptance, and there's going to be resignation in this, in this approach. And it's tentative, you know, it's a very eye-opening experience. And I want to make sure that everyone is aware that this is not just board policy written on paper. It will be, need to be enacted and enforced, and with the positives and negatives that go along with it. So I want to make sure that everyone here and everyone that has access to this sees the magnitude of this, of this board policy.
Okay. Thank you.
Since this is a first reading, I'll open it up for public comment. Since there is none, final questions amongst the board members here? Any? If not, then that is completing that item, and we can move on to the...